Better late than never.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I call to order the meeting of the Manassas Park Governing Body for May 16th, 2022. We have approval of the agenda before us. Any changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. On a procedural note, we are interviewing for two Manassas Park School Board appointments. The two terms are effective July 1st, 2022, and expire June 30th, 2025. We have three applicants, Ms. Shontae Jones, Ms. Ellen Slabodnik, and Ms. Angela Pounders. First, we have Ms. Jones, welcome.
Thank you.
We invite you to give a brief, three-minute opening statement, and Keith will be our timer.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shontae Jones. I'm excited to be before you this evening as for appointment to the school board. Very excited. I love living in Manassas Park. I've been here for 10 years as a resident, going on my 11th year in Manassas Park. I've been in education for 20 years. I have started off as an educator. So I taught third grade and then went up through the ranks in education. Was a school administrator and then worked for the State Education Agency and then now with the federal government in education. And so I have dedicated, what I'd say is dedicated my life to education, to students, to children and families, and just to making sure that children have what they need. I mean, I don't work specifically for a school division right now, but I'm in Health and Human Services, and so I'm in the Human Services capacity where I am still helping people, still helping children and families, and that is where I get my joy. And so coming up for appointment for the school board would be something else that I'm very excited about and feel like I could be an asset to the city of Manassas Park Public Schools.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let's begin with the questions. Let's begin with Council Member Hampton.
So I have to wear my glasses now. So my question is, with one to two meetings a month, all school boards are limited in what they can do. How does the board, how do you see the board deciding what's most important in that small constrained amount of time?
I'd say the most important thing would be to definitely, whatever is going to impact the students at schools. So I would say that would be the most important thing to try to squeeze into that tight agenda. Anything that impacts the schools, the students, the teachers at the schools, I would say that would need to be placed as a priority. Anything that has to do with funding, I would also say needs to be at the top, needs to be a priority. And yeah, I'd say those would be the top two things, anything dealing directly with students and teachers, and then anything that has to do with any funding decisions that need to be made.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Jones, can I ask you to speak up just a little bit more? The microphone picks up for the video, but it's not part of the PA system and the acoustics are so bad in the room.
Okay.
Trouble hearing. Thank you.
No problem.
Kristin?
Hi, Shontae. Thank you for applying again. My question is in regards to the school violence. We've seen it. Couple of fights already to break out in this school year. What would you do to try to decrease and reduce the school violence amongst the students? And what's your stance on kids that are fighting in school in terms of disciplining them?
I feel like, you know, school violence, I think, has even picked up since COVID, just because, you know, children were at home. There may not have been a lot of supervision. A lot of the social-emotional skills that were needed weren't being taught. They weren't getting those. They weren't having the interaction with other children. And so it's pretty much at this point that they just don't know how to interact with each other. And it's kind of like how we say in early childhood where they just don't have the words to tell you what's wrong. And so I feel like that's the same across all age groups. And I feel like school counselors are a big part, trauma-informed care. I'm a big proponent of trauma-informed care because we don't know what each child is going through. We don't know what those triggers are. And like I said, they don't have, they may not have the skills that they need to be able to reconcile something without being violent. That may be the only thing that they know how to do. And so I feel like school counselors, some type of a social-emotional program would definitely need to be put into place where, not that it's something optional or something that's extra, but that it's embedded into the everyday curriculum, into whoever's in the hallways. If there are, you know, hall monitors or even the school bus drivers, or everyone can participate in helping to kind of understand what each child is going through and understand how to respond to their children and not react to them. And I feel like even with school violence, sending a child home, having them suspended is, you know, they're going to be in that same environment where they're probably, either they may be learning or nobody's talking to them, nobody is helping them. And so I don't feel like suspension or expulsion outside of school is a great fixer for that issue because there is a deeper issue and there needs to be something to figure out what that deeper issue is before we can even proceed to say, how do we help to fix this?
Thank you.
So piggybacking on his question, I've also been concerned with the fights have been going on in school. How do you think or how would the school board address the situation by involving the parents? Like, any ideas that come to mind as to how you can incorporate the parents when they're not home because they're probably working or there's something going on at home? How do you, how do you connect to the parent so that you can connect to the child?
There have to be some creative ways. As you said, like, parents probably aren't home. They're working two or three jobs or they have different hours. And so there have to be some creative ways. As much as I personally don't like text messaging, text messaging, you know, would be a way to reach out to parents, even to try to say, hey, what's your schedule look like? Or, you know, I'm gonna send a quick text. What does your schedule look like? Can we set up a FaceTime? Just to try to get the parent involved. Because sometimes even if you send something home or you send an email, parents aren't going to be able to get it. And so it is important to have that face-to-face time and to actually have a relationship. It's building relationships. Everything is on building relationships. And I feel like even in the beginning of the year, the school staff, teachers need to start building relationships with parents. And so they understand, they can get an understanding of exactly why it's so important for them to be a part of their child's school career and not just, you know, we're not just gonna be calling you when, you know, Johnny does something that's wrong, but I'm gonna call you just because, you know, he had a great day today. And so then, parents would also be more likely to pick up the phone when you call because they know it's not always gonna be, oh, well, Ms. Jones is just calling me because Johnny did something crazy today. So building a positive relationship and a partnership so that parents know that they're a part of their child's education and not just a disciplinarian when their child does something wrong.
What stands out to you that you've experienced over your, your time on the school board? Is it an event or a policy, what, or a story?
I'd say the, I think at every meeting, they do a superintendent spotlight. And that has stood out to me because it's showcasing the great work that the teachers are doing or that individual students are doing that folks otherwise wouldn't know. And so I think that's a great thing. Like, I always enjoy those parts where we hear from, I think last week there were the administrative professionals were at the last meeting where they came. And, you know, you often see them in the schools, but you don't know really how much they do. And just to have that time to spotlight what they do and to show them some appreciation, those superintendent spotlights have been a great addition. I believe the nurses are there tonight just to get recognition and a thanks because sometimes those are some of the things that kind of go unnoticed and go unthanked. And so just to say that, you know, we see you and we appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
She totally just stole my question. So I'm gonna turn it around a little bit. What's been your biggest, like, learning experience over the past year? Like, maybe something that you went in thinking one way and now you're like, whoa, I didn't realize that?
The whole flow of the meeting. And I think, actually, the big thing was were the, what are called work sessions. And in my brain, a work session was something completely different. So to me, a work session is you're sitting around a table and you're talking about what's coming up. You may be presented with something and then you're sitting and you're talking about it, making decisions. Totally is not what actually happened. And so that was something that I was like, oh, okay, this is a little bit different, the work session. So getting an understanding of exactly what a work session is for the school board was something that was shocking. It was, you know, interesting for me to learn. So, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you for your application. Appreciate you coming forward. In your answers to our question or the questions that were presented, you spoke of one of the priorities, your number one priority was trauma-informed teaching. Can you just expand about that and just help educate me as to what that means and just all that it encompasses?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, pretty much, trauma-informed teaching is kind of understanding, I think, when I was talking about the school violence, the answering the school violence question, trauma-informed teaching came to mind just because in order for children, for students to absorb or to learn anything, we have to get to some of the root issues. If, you know, Suzie's not understanding this math assignment, it might not be because she just doesn't get it. It might be she can't think because she's thinking about what happened to her mom, you know, right before she left the house. And so understanding what children are going through and understanding how to address, or not even how to address them, but how to kind of work with them to understand what they're going through and to have some strategies to help that child because if you can address the root of the problem, then everything else will, can fall into place. And so it's understanding the root cause and not saying, you know, you know, what's, what's wrong with you, but kind of a what's happened to you. Good question.
Good, good call. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yep.
We have time for a second round of questions.
Yep. I'll put the glasses back on. I don't know about you, but since I've been in the school, my eyesight is, yeah. So, just like us, I know the school board has goals and accomplishments they wish to achieve. How does, how, as you as a school board member, track those goals and accomplishments to make sure that you're on the path to achieve those? And if you're not, how to do a course correction?
So currently, I know during those work sessions, those things do come up, some of the goals that we are working towards, they do come up. I am not 100% clear on how we're tracking, honestly, how we're tracking those different goals and things that are, I've come up. What I would suggest to be able to track, track them is that, you know, a lot, each time our agenda changes, and not often are we going back to say, okay, what happened? We just approved this curriculum, you know, what happened? Is it working? How's implementation going? And I don't know if I just haven't been on long enough to see that. But that is something that I would say, you know, yes, we had the goal of improving or implementing a social-emotional curriculum. You know, we heard about it, there was a vote on it, they're gonna implement it. But do we know, you know, three months, four months down the road with this timeline that we were given, do we know, have we met those goals? And if not, how are we going to course correct? And so I feel like at this point, like, that's what I would like to see. Again, I'm not sure if that is happening, but I agree that it does need to happen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Bencks?
Okay. I've noticed throughout the years, I checked the, the school division report card and our SOL scores throughout the grade levels, that certain student groups continue to lag behind. And it's the black student group, Hispanic, and the economically disadvantaged. Now, what ideas or programs do you have in mind to improve the achievement gap of those student groups?
It's culturally relevant teaching. I guess that's another buzzword, like, trauma-informed, but culturally relevant teaching, understanding each child, again, where they're coming from. And there may be a better way to teach based off of, you know, what that child needs. And it's, it's kind of like, what's the word? Forget what the word is, but just making sure that you are doing things specifically for that child. But understanding where they come from, trying to, you know, if I, you know, if I know that Jane likes, you know, if her family celebrates certain holidays, maybe I'm gonna try to make my lessons so that they are centered around those and that's something that she can understand and relate to. Because sometimes, you know, if we're living, if you have a child that lives in DC and you're talking about a farm, well, they have no idea. You have to come at them with something that they understand. And so it's the same thing, just that culturally relevant teaching, helping children understand, meeting them where they are. And again, that comes with building those relationships, again, at the beginning of the school year to understand who's in your class and who those parents are of those children that are in your class.
Thank you.
Thank you. How can you showcase all the positive things that students are doing in school versus always concentrating on the fights and all the bad things that are happening? Right now, we hear so much of the fighting that's going on. How can the school board come up with an idea of showcasing more, like, inside the schools and outside the schools so that we can concentrate more on the positive things that Manassas Park is doing? I know that the, there's newsletters, but I think the principal of Manassas Park hasn't sent out a newsletter since April, if I'm not mistaken. How do we keep that positive vibe, that positive message going so that we don't concentrate on the negative so much?
I feel like, again, like I said, at the, at the school board meetings, we see all these great things that the staff and the students are doing. And I don't know how many other people are seeing that, right? So I know that there's the, the Facebook page, and I know the Facebook page is always being updated. There's always things going on that Facebook page for the schools. And so utilizing that social media, I think, is a huge thing that could happen. And even if they can, because I think, you know, sometimes you get phone calls from news outlets. And so, yes, again, build a relationship. Yeah, don't just call me when something's going on, but let me have your number so I can call you when something great is going on. So let's put that on the news. And so again, it's building relationships, using social media, and even word of mouth. Because there are a lot of people that may work in the area but may not live in the area. And so even just talking up what's going on and having partnerships with different businesses, organizations in Manassas Park to kind of showcase what they're doing or building new partnerships so that we can say, hey, you know, this student just won the art show of America. Can you put their artwork in your, in your organization or in your business? So just partnerships, building relationships using social media, I think, is gonna be a huge thing, too.
Thank you.
What do you think is the best way to address differences of opinion between school board members and between the school board and the school administration?
We haven't had that happen.
Hypothetically.
I think, again, just talking, those relationships, again, like, relationships are the foundation of everything. So building relationships, having open communication, and understanding, I think, even when, when board members get onto the board, understanding that you're not here for you. You're here for the students, the, the teachers, the families of the city of Manassas Park. So it's kind of like, you know, you have to take yourself out of the, out of the situation, that it's not about you. Is, you know, what I'm thinking is my opinion. Is this just my opinion or is this something that is gonna benefit the students and the families of Manassas Park? And so I think even making sure that during whatever type of onboarding or training, that there's an understanding of the culture, the norms, the expectations of a school board member. And even when there are differences of opinion, understanding that the process is going to be to talk through them and understand that, no, you may not get your way, your opinion will be heard, but we're gonna all do what's best, that we've all taken this oath to do what's best for the students and the children, the families and the staff of Manassas Park Schools.
Thank you.
As you know, not all of our students are college-bound, nor should they be. What career technical things would you like to see come down the pipeline or what do you think we need to work on there?
I would say we could be doing a lot more with the career and technical education. I feel like partnerships with, again, or businesses around in Manassas Park. There's so many car dealerships and mechanic shops and home improvement shops and cosmetology places. And even since I'm in early childhood, I'm going to say the early childhood centers, that, you know, students can kind of get internships or apprenticeships in those different areas. I also know, like, there's a lot right now, there are some grants out there in education and through Health and Human Services where they are giving money to districts for apprenticeship programs so that you can even create these programs. So just tapping into what's out there. And again, making, building these partnerships, these community collaborations with the people and the businesses that are already in Manassas Park. And even talking with parents, again, bringing the parents in because, you know, we might not know exactly what parents may already have a business that we can, you know, attach, we can, you know, help attach some children to, to kind of get an understanding of what else is out there beyond college.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, what are your thoughts about dual immersion, another term that's thrown out there?
Yeah.
Classes for the elementary school?
Oh, for elementary. I think it's a good thing. I know that, you know, our, if children that are, have English as their second language, I think research has shown that if they're learning in their, their home language, then it's, learning in English is going to help with that. And so I think that it's a great idea. I had the opportunity to be at a program where I was, I actually implemented a dual-language program. And it was a pilot, just to kind of see, you know, let's throw everything at the wall and see what sticks. But it was, you know, there were children that were in one classroom that was, it was a Spanish-only classroom. So they were just immersed in Spanish language all day long, whether they spoke Spanish or not. And then there was a classroom where there was, half a day was in English, half a day was in Spanish. And actually, the one where we saw the most growth was the immersion classroom where the children that even didn't speak any Spanish were speaking Spanish by the time they left that classroom. And then those that were, that were Spanish-only speakers had a huge English vocabulary by the time they left that classroom. And I believe now even, I've been gone from there for almost 12 years and they're still implementing that program. And so I am a witness that it worked.
Yeah, I've seen it work in other communities as well.
Yes. Yeah, if done correctly. It has to be planned. You have to have the right people. The parents need to be on board. Teachers have to have buy-in. But yes, it can work if done correctly.
Great, appreciate it.
Ms. Jones, we would now like to invite you to make a three-minute closing statement. If there's anything that we haven't asked you, you'd like to talk about, feel free.
Okay. Oh, I think you've asked me everything. There were a lot today. But no, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to go up for reappointment to the school board. I have thoroughly enjoyed myself. It's been a learning curve, which I, you know, of course, you expect whenever you do anything new. And so I've enjoyed every minute and everything that I have learned. I've had the opportunity to sit with the board members and just kind of talk to them, just to get their read and to get an understanding of what the school board does. Dr. Saunders is amazing. I enjoy working with her. I think that was a great choice to have Dr. Saunders as the superintendent for schools. And I'm just, I'm excited. I'm excited just even about, you know, the future, if I am reappointed to the board, just to be able to continue to give ideas and continue to interact with the school staff and, and parents and the rest of the board members, even the leadership team at Central Office. They've been an amazing group to work with. And I would welcome the opportunity to get to work with them and with the governing board again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we, we really appreciate that you've stepped up to volunteer. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
On the procedural note, the public hearing will be June 7th. So feel free to have your supporters speak on your behalf or send in emails on your behalf, but whoever, however many you have.
Okay.
So please feel free. And thank you again.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our, our next applicant is Ms. Ellen Slabodnik. If you're comfortable to come forward now.
Hey, Zee, what's up?
Hi.
Thank you.
We begin the questions. We invite you to give a brief, three-minute opening statement.
Absolutely. My name's Ellen Slabodnik, and I am actually a 10-year educator. I work in one of the second, I work in the second largest district in the state of Maryland currently. I'm a new resident in Blooms Crossing, a little under a year, but I, Manassas Park, sorry. I live in Blooms Crossing. And, but I'm loving my time here and it's a really great community. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to get involved so early on in my residence here. As an educator, I love visiting schools, so I walk around the neighborhood a lot. I walk by the schools, I check them out, I go to the middle school, the high school. That's a passion of mine. When I travel, I like to check out schools. So I've already been keeping an eye of what's going on, and I think that we're doing some really great things here. Obviously, there's room for improvement. And I know I look young. I'm older than I look, I know that. But I do have a lot of ideas. Currently, I am an assistant principal. I have worked in a middle and a high school setting. I work at a blended learning charter school where we focus on online learning as well as face-to-face learning. So that's a background of mine that I think I could bring to the school board here. I've also, my school that I work with currently is associated with the University of Maryland. So I have some ties to the university. And with that, I have worked with districts throughout the state of Maryland. So not just mine, but I've worked with some other counties and districts. And I've also trained other districts on blended learning. So even though I work in Maryland, I've had an outreach in other communities. And I think that my knowledge and my experience would really help the small community. I'm also from a small town in Maryland. We had like three high schools, a little bit more than this district, but still, I love that small community feel. And that's kind of the main reason as to why I'm here. Education's my passion, serving the community is my passion. And I just really, I saw the opening and I had to jump at it. So thank you for having me here and thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. We'll start at this end this time. Councilmember Hossid?
Hi, good evening. I guess you were a teacher before. I had experienced a teacher. What's your thoughts on how do you, I guess, slow down the turnover rate that we see in a lot of school districts? And I don't want to hear just about the pay increases. What are the other steps that you can take to stop the turnover?
Absolutely. So honestly, as my experience as administrator, that's where most of the turnover can happen. If you have a good administrator in the building that can create a good climate and culture to really keep those teachers engaged, you will have more teachers stay with you. So providing the leaders of the district as well as the schools, the ability to give incentives to increase staff morale, to build up that community with the parents as well. It's not just the teachers. You kind of have to bring in the whole community. You really have to make the school feel like a family. And that's how get the educators to stay. They want to love going into the building every day. Teachers across the nation don't get paid very well, right? So that's, that's a big problem everywhere. So increasing pay will solve it somewhat, but you still kind of have to work on that climate and culture. And so I don't think we can forget that.
Number more?
Ellen, thank you for applying.
Of course.
Put your name forward. Why is, why is it important to have a diverse teaching staff?
Diverse teaching staff, and I would argue that a diverse leadership staff, diverse staff period for the whole district is very, very important. Studies show that students learn better by seeing faces of people of their culture that represent their beliefs. And so you want to make sure that you're giving students the best opportunity by providing them with those, I want to say people to look up to almost, right? Like, you, when you go back to education, you think about that teach that made a difference. And sometimes those teachers had something in common with you. And we want to give that experience to our students here in Manassas Park as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Benson?
Hi, Ellen. You said that we do great things here in our school district, but there's room for improvement. What's one thing that you would want to improve first?
Yeah, so I, I loved the questions that we did. And so for the challenges, I think an easy one would be to increase our website and social media presence. And I was kind of alluded to. I stalked, obviously, the website and the social media. And we haven't, there hasn't been a post since March of 2021. And that's kind of a way to engage the community, not just our parents, but your, your high school students as well as those recent graduates, right? We still want to pull those graduates in. They are very into social media and we need to keep engaging them that way. Also, the website, website is, it could be updated. We mentioned the principal, the principal, I noticed that the principal's corner still has the welcome to school letter. That was in August. So I think just kind of updating your social media and website presence to really get people to come and visit. The more that people visit, the more that they learn about the school, the more they want to be engaged, the more they want to contribute. And so that's, I think, one of the easiest challenges to address. You're welcome.
What personality attribute do you think is most essential to be a good school board member?
I think the most important one is to be inquisitive, which I am, I ask a lot of questions. I'm that person in the meeting that's like, I have one more question. I'm sorry, we can't finish. Because I think the only way to like really learn and understand someone's point of view, what they're trying to explain, is to ask those questions. And you can't be afraid to ask those questions. That's how we learn. Think of a classroom, right? You want the students to raise their hand and ask the questions. That means that they're engaged. That means that they listen to you. And that means that they want to contribute to what they're talking about. they want to contribute to what they're talking about. So I think inquisitive is very, very important and I definitely fit that bill.
Thank you.
Um, how would you attract diverse teachers? How, how, what would be a plan to recruit more diversity in our, in our schools?
Yeah. Um, I mentioned, I went way more in depth in the answers, but I'll talk about what I wrote briefly. We, I know we're working on building partnerships with, uh, universities around the area, which is amazing, but we also need to increase that, um, recruitment into other types of universities. For example, we could look into HBCUs to get some diverse staff. Also, a lot of colleges and universities are now doing online recruitment. So I'm, I'm wondering if we're limiting ourselves to just what's around us rather than kind of going and signing up to do online to other states or other districts across the nation. So I think the more that we reach out, the more diversity we'll get. Another way is to kind of look at the non-traditional education programs. There is, in a lot of states, in my district, for example, we have teachers who can join and they are conditional for two years. So they may not have the education background, but they have a knowledge in a subject and they want to make a difference in their community and we're going to pull those people and put them into the school building. So kind of building up that non-traditional program, I think we'll get some, um, community members around the area and they will really be excited to join.
Thank you.
Want you to drink? Go ahead.
All right, thank you.
I'll take a break right now.
I went to water, you had water.
I, I can, I can listen and drink water, I promise. I'm really good at multitasking.
Hi, Ellen.
Hi.
Thank you for applying. Um, a question's about, uh, school violence. So we've seen an uptick in, in school fights in our schools and I just want to know what ideas you have to reduce this, the school fighting as well as your views on disciplining the students that are fighting.
Absolutely. I think that's a great question. Um, so I know we, I know the previous person interviewing talked about trauma-informed teaching practice and that's very big. I would agree with that. There's also something called the whole child approach, which kind of aligns with the trauma-informed, trauma-informed teaching practices. What that means is you need to kind of tackle the, all parts of the child, not just the academic portion. So what are they, what's going on in their home life? What's going on with them socially, emotionally? What's going on? Have they eaten? Things like that, um, building those relationships. So those two things are key in, uh, a stat, decreasing school violence, excuse me. Another big thing in education right now is just sort of justice. And so not just suspending the student because they had the fight, but kind of having, sitting down, having those peer mediation talks, really getting to understand why there is that conflict. Cause sometimes they just come in in a bad mood and that bad mood, that anger has just displaced another student. And we need to teach them different ways, right? Violence is not the answer. We all have bad days, right? Even as adults. We know as adults that we can't put our hands on somebody, but we need to take that opportunity to teach those children that they can't do that. Another thing I'm going to bring up is, uh, bias. I was looking at some of the statistics for the suspension rates. I know they were a couple of years old, but I noticed that the only suspensions, I think it was in the middle school, was that it was all Hispanic students. So are we, cultures are different, right? So are we taking a step back and kind of understanding, was it a cultural difference and that's what the problem was? Do we need to really look at our policies around student conduct to make sure that they are fair to all students and not just students of one culture or one color?
Hmm. Okay.
Did I, uh, sorry, in my stance, sorry, my stance on discipline, I'm an, I'm assistant principal, I do discipline every day, so. But you have to be creative, right? I think that's kind of the, the thing. And you have to be fair. I think being fair and just is very key. Um, we have a student code of conduct that every school has to follow with set policies and I think that is a way to make sure that no matter who comes to my desk, I'm following these policies and I'm not being unfair or unjust to one student because of their gender or what have you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. So my question has to do with separating the roles, cause you're an educator by trade, right? So you're an educator, now you're in administrative role. This is a little bit different being a board, so that's whatever is above, an administrator. So how do you, how will you go about separating those roles to make sure, I mean, let's be honest, some, some of it's going to bleed over, but when you're in that position saying, you know what? I'm not the school administrator, I'm the board member. How are you going to go about doing that?
That's a great question and I think I have to answer that by being honest, saying that like I'm gonna, it's going to be a learning curve for me, right? I am a lifelong learner. I am constantly reading articles. I've, I printed out everything I could about the school. I'm constantly researching and so I will do my best to keep them separate and I will keep that educator, uh, cap in the back of my mind, but I think it might take me like a little bit to really understand how to divide the roles, as you say, but I don't like to fail. I'm a little tad OCD, I'm perfectionist and so I love having challenges and I kind of see that as a challenge that I need to, uh, take a stab at and I think I'll do really well at it. That's a really good question and it's something I hadn't thought about. So thank you. I'm very self-reflective too, so I will probably have an answer for you like tomorrow. Just right now on the, on the spot, I will admit, I don't have it, but that, that's a great question.
Email me or you can come up here.
Oh.
Cause we'll be up here tomorrow night.
Perfect.
Different clothes, but same time. Thank you.
You're al, thank you.
Okay. We'll do round two. Uh, councilmember Haseeb, uh, Javed?
Thank you. Um, I guess we hear, uh, throughout the school district, throughout the nation, um, certain materials being banned or certain materials, uh, coming forward. What kind of, uh, process or criteria would you follow to either determine if this is material is good learning material, to ban or to accept? You know, what, what was the, what's the type of, uh, I guess, process would, would you implement?
Yeah. All process, processes need to be tied back to your mission and vision of the district as well as your strategic plan and then you need to think about what's best for the students. So if we were going to ban something, we really need to make sure that that does not align at all with the mission and vision of our district, of all the individual schools as well. And then will it help us achieve our goals as a district or will it not help us achieve our goals? Um, and then I think another way to look at it is to see how offensive is it? What, uh, what groups of people are being offended? Um, I think that's, I think that would be the first couple of ways to kind of start and we can go from there. But I think that would be the key thing.
Councilmember Moore?
Um, what are your thoughts about dual immersion classes, particularly in the elementary, uh, classes?
Dual immersion is great. Um, I, in my county, we actually have a bunch of dual immersion, uh, elementary schools. There's a French one and a Spanish one and I think we're talking about doing more as well because they've become so successful. And the skills that the students learn at that young age are really, really good for when they move on to whatever they want to do, right? Also, as a community that has a high Hispanic population, the fact that you'll have more students within that community speaking dual languages, you're going to build that community, you're going to build that, uh, trust, you're really going to improve that environment. So there is way more research that supports it than there is that says it's not a good thing and so I'm a hundred percent for it. I think it's great. I wish I was able to do that when I was younger. I wasn't around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts about the school calendar? How, what do you think about utilizing the summer and for what? And where do you think the break should fall, um, in a line?
Ooh, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna lose some people with this. Um, I have always been into schools and districts where we have the summer off a couple of months. Um, but I've been very intrigued by districts that have multiple breaks throughout the year and don't only have like three big summers. They'll have like a spring break, a fall break, a winter break. I don't want to use the word year-long learning, but essentially that's what it is, right? So we're doing more learning. I could be persuaded the other way, but I think it's very intriguing. Um, but if you're not, if you are going to include the summer breaks, the, the, uh, couple of months, what you could do is we could re, uh, use education technology. There are a bunch of programs that could be purchased or we could have teachers develop curriculum for students to use or maybe some type of enrichment programs, enrichment, um, packets for students to use over the summer. We could also re, uh, step out into the community and see what the community has to offer over the summer and maybe we can utilize that in the, uh, school. So I think, especially with the learning loss and learning gap that happened, I, unfortunately, I think summer breaks are going to start to be dwindled throughout the nation and I think that teaching over the summer or learning in the summer is going to be incredibly important in order, in order to close those gaps.
Great. Thanks.
With the commitments that you do have, do you think you will have enough time, particularly for the extracurricular learning activities that are designed specifically for school board members?
Yes. I love planning. I live by my calendar. I am very good at time management. Um, I a hundred percent think that I have plenty of time. Thank you.
How would you create a program so that you can, we can do this whole child approach and the bias, things that you were talking about? Is, I would like to see, uh, at least a plan on how to implement that in our, in our school system so that we could have these fights stopped and we can have more, more support for our students. Would you be able to, let's say, come up with the, with the plan to implement while you're, you're in the school board?
Absolutely. So the first step is professional development with the teachers. And in your strategic plan, you have outlined, uh, professional development, um, programming for the teachers. I didn't see that addressed specifically, so that was actually one of my questions. If I could show you guys the, the strategic plan, I like wrote notes all over it, cause I always have questions. And so I'm not sure if that was addressed, but if it wasn't, that's something I would immediately add, right? Is having, um, the staff trained on these types of practices. And a lot of it is out there online. I don't think we would have to have, um, someone and pay someone to come in, right? A lot of it we can find, we can utilize our resources. I'm sure we have some psychologists, um, around the neighborhood, the school psychologist could come, talk about it. But it really is giving the teachers those skills within their toolbox to really address that within the classroom. Because a lot of these problems do, could be solved within the classroom if teachers had the right practices. And so you guys already have a great strategic plan in place. I would just add a few things to it, which one of them would be the whole child approach and the trauma-informed, uh, uh, practices, um, social, emotional learning, peer mediation, all that kind of falls together under the one big umbrella.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, year after year, I've noticed that, that black students, Hispanic students and econom, economically disadvantaged students do poorly in our SOL scores, um, for all grade levels. And I just want to know what ideas you have to improve the achievement gap for those student groups?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, sorry, I'm going to my answers in the questions. So I did a data analysis, right? And so I kind of highlighted what I thought, this was question number three, what were the biggest, uh, glaring issues that I noticed with your achievement gap? Um, and throughout your Manassas Park Middle School and Manassas Park High School, the main students who did fail were your English learners, students with disabilities, Hispanic and economically disadvantaged across the board, not just one, across the board. Um, I also noticed that some of the students, even though we passed, we only had like two or three students or two percent, uh, score advanced, which I thought was very interesting. So we're getting the proficient, but we're not getting to the advanced. I think we all can agree that we understand that. So some things that I mentioned, um, first of all, is doing an item analysis. I'm not sure if our teachers are kind of taking a, a step back and looking at the SOLs and doing an item analysis. So what question is, uh, tied to which standard? What is that standard asking for? What standard across the board are our students struggling at? And then what can we do within the classroom to focus on those standards? Also using common standard-based assessments, I would specifically say in the math area. So what that means is all the math teachers of one grade level come together and they're going to do the same assessments that we can see if the students understand this specific standard in every single, uh, classroom. Because sometimes different teaching practices unfortunately lead to, um, the better scores in one standard versus poor scores in the others. We kind of have to figure out where those weaknesses and strengths are. And both of those so far are free, right? I've given you two free ideas. Um, I did note that maybe purchasing some type of diagnostic tools that would test the students throughout the year on math concepts would help us kind of track to see where they start at the beginning of the school year and where they're going. And that would help us continue to, uh, monitor their growth. And WAA is one and they have math and reading. I, I absolutely love it. It gives you their Lexile, so it tells you where they're reading on what grade level and then it tells you what standards within that grade level they're struggling with and you can go from there. I also think the fact that we are a small community, we have one element, uh, sorry, one middle school, one high school and I know we have two elementary schools, but kind of one under the big umbrella. I'm not sure if there's vertical planning time, meaning are the elementary, uh, school teachers meeting with the middle school teachers because they're getting the same students and then from the middle school to the high school? Are they going to the different schools to observe each other, right? What's going on in the elementary school? I know you're doing a good job because they're getting good scores, so what's happening between the elementary and the middle school? Maybe the high school teachers could go in, take a look at it. So just kind of having our teachers kind of observe each other and have those honest conversations about what's going on, I think would really, really help.
Thank you.
This question is related to my earlier question.
Okay.
So there's going to be a point, just like we, in this, in our, our position as, um, city council members and I'm sure the existing board, uh, school board members have encountered, where a special interest group or an individual comes to you with a, some sort of concern. How will you, as a board member, not as an administrator, but as a board member, handle such a situation?
The first thing I'd like to do before I respond is I would like to gather all information, right? You can't automatically just take a side and say you'll fix it. You really need to gather, um, both sides of the story. There's always more than one side of the story. Sometimes there's multiple. And you have to be polite, you have to be patient with the person who has the, uh, issue. But you also want to make sure that you're listening to them and you, sorry, I'm trying to think of how to say this without an administrator hat. I'm trying, I'm trying to answer your first question.
It's not easy, is it?
No, it's not, but I, I appreciate you challenging me. So thank you. Um, I really just, I want to say listening and then maybe reaching out to someone who could better help them, right? If I'm the school board, um, person, I'm not the administrator. So reaching out to my school administrators to get a better idea of what's going on, getting feedback from all stakeholders involved to make sure that we can address the, uh, problem correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now invite you to make a three-minute closing statement. Anything at all that you would like to say?
Um, first of all, again, thank you so much for letting me, uh, come. I love living here and I just want to see this community be the best that it can be. And so I think that I am full of a lot of ideas, which I hope that you've heard, um, and I really think that I could help strengthen the community. Um, I am 33, so I know people think I'm a lot younger, but, um, I just, that's the way my face looks. Um, but education is my passion, like I said earlier, and the community is my passion. And any way that I can help, that's kind of who I am as a person, like what can I do to make this better? And I see that opening here in the school board, and that's really where I think that I would fit. I appreciate the challenging questions, really, especially from you, Councilmember Hampton. And I'm really going to think about it, and I'm going to email you with some, a much better verbose response in a couple of days. But I just, education is really, really important. I think it's the way for us to change the future. I know that said a lot, but I really do truly mean it. And I think that as I've moved out from the classroom and into kind of behind the scenes as administrator, working with districts, doing professional learning, things like that, it really is the leaders that make a difference. And I think that we, as a school board, including myself, could make a difference here. And so that's my ultimate goal. So thank you again.
Well, we thank you for making application. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Of course.
And the public hearing, as you know, will be June seventh, so feel free to have your supporters come in and speak on your behalf or send emails on your behalf, however many you would like.
Okay, thank you so much.
And thank you again.
Of course.
We have Ms. Angela Pounders. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm dealing with allergies, so if I have to stop and, you know, get some water, I'm not sick. When I start coughing.
That usually happens to us on Tuesday nights.
Same here. A number of us have allergies, so don't give it a second thought. Before we begin, we invite you to give a brief three-minute opening statement.
Sure. Let me get rid of my mint so I can. I'm trying not to cough during the other interviews. Well, my name is Angela Pounders. We moved here to raise our family thirteen years ago. And we've loved it. We've been here, you know, ever since. I'm actually a homeschool parent, so I don't have a child in the public school. But education has been a passion of mine since I was, I was in fourth or fifth grade. I knew I wanted to grow up to be a teacher and a mama. And so I achieved both of those goals. And I'm still, still a teacher, just a homeschool teacher today. But education is just so important, you know, our children are our future. I'm not going to break into like a Whitney Houston song or anything. But, you know, it's so true. And I think it's important that we raise, or we, we help parents raise children that are going to go into the world, who are going to be critical thinkers and who can make a difference and who want to serve their community.
Let's begin with Councilmember Hampton.
So thank you for coming today. And I actually have a number of friends that were either partially homeschooled and then traditional homeschooled, or they had siblings that were a hundred percent homeschooled. So I'm somewhat familiar with homeschooling. I am myself not a product of it, just been around people who are. So my question is, how will you make that transition? Because homeschooling, making decisions about a homeschool is a little bit different than making a decision about a student population that is a few thousand. So what of those skill sets that you have as a homeschool administrator translate to a larger school district as Manassas Park?
Okay, great question. Thank you. I do, I started a co-op of my own. A co-op is a group of homeschool families who get together, and I am the administrator of that co-op. So I am, in a way, taking care of more than just my family, but a group of families and what we want to learn and what their desires are. So on a much smaller scale, I work with those families to see, you know, what are their goals and what do they want to see us achieve throughout that school year? So it's just, it's just going to be blown up, right? I was a teacher and then also an administrator of a preschool. And I was, started at the bottom as an assistant teacher during the summers when I was in college. And then worked my way up to actually being the director of the preschool. So I got to kind of bring a lot of what I learned along the way into that. And again, as, you know, as I was director of that school, I had to think as a whole. I went from thinking about my little seven kids in my class, my son Beam's classroom, to, you know, having to think of the school as a whole and the needs of, of everyone and not just my one little class. So I see similarities in that there will be a lot more people to communicate with versus, you know, what I'm doing now. I love communicating with people. I feel like I'm a good listener. Even if I don't agree with someone, I'm not going to let on right away because, you know, I want, I want them to be able to say, you know, what they want to say and, and hear their side. But I'm also up for, you know, a, a good discussion, a good debate about things to see, you know, why they want something to happen a certain way. And then, you know, it's not totally up to me if I were on the board, so I would take, you know, their thoughts and their concerns to the board and then, you know, would share what my ideas were on it.
Thank you.
So there's been an increase of, of school violence. And I just wanted to know what's your, your views on ideas or programs to reduce the school violence, or school fighting? And your, your views on disciplining those students that are fighting?
Okay. While I don't have a child in the public school, I do keep up on, you know, what's going on in the public schools. And I feel, I really feel like that there needs to be a better relationship between home and the schools. The other candidate mentioned about that relationship. And it's important to know what's going on with the children to understand why they are acting out in the schools. I feel like there needs to be more of value on just, a value on life, kind of a broad term, but just of how we are appreciating each other as people, regardless of, you know, our background or what we look like or, you know, any disabilities. And I really feel like that needs to start at home. I know that everybody doesn't necessarily have that environment to get that at home. I don't like the idea that it should fall a hundred percent on the schools for, for that. But that really needs to be a team effort on just working on, we need to appreciate differences. You know, not everyone is going to think like us or look like us or, you know, like the things that we do or be as smart as us. And so more of a, well, tolerance is the right word, but just of, just learning to, to get along. That sounds so, you know, but can we all just get along? But I mean, it's, it's true, but we need to teach children the skills to be able to do that, to be able to respect one another. I do feel there should be some disciplinary action, but at the same time, we need to understand why these things are happening. I mean, even take it down to the preschool level, two children don't share and one teacher wants to just take the toy away and put it on the shelf. What are you teaching the children? Nothing. It's like, you don't share, I take it away. You know, you're not teaching them the, what they need to learn how to share. And so understanding what's going on in the child's home. I'm always a first, like, first seek to understand what's going on before just dumping some sort of like disciplinary action on the child. Not to say that there shouldn't be a disciplinary action, but maybe it's not, you know, we're just going to kick you out of school for a week. Because then what are, what does that teach them, you know? If someone wanted to go that route, then maybe there are some worksheets or, of reading that the children could do to learn better, to, you know, to how get, how to get along, how to express your anger in, you know, happier ways. But I wouldn't just, for the sake of just kicking someone out to kick them out and say, you've been bad, you need to be removed from everybody else. There needs to be some kind of learning that goes along with that, so it doesn't happen again.
Okay, thank you.
Why have you chosen to homeschool your children versus attending Manassas Park Schools?
Good question. I figured that I would get that from somebody on the board. You know, to be honest, I thought, you know, I'm going to be a teacher, my kids are going to go to the school that I'm going to teach at, they'll come to my classroom after cla, you know, after school. And my husband and I were just, you know, we were talking about it. And it just happened. I mean, when it came time to, you know, the age to enroll them in school, I just, I was like, I can do this. And so it's not that I feel like the, the city schools are bad in, in any way. I just feel like that I personally can be the best teacher for my child. And that doesn't mean that I know everything, because of course I don't know everything. But I enjoy learning, I enjoy teaching. The other candidate used the term lifelong learner. That's, that's what I'm trying to instill in my children. And it's just, that's what I feel is the best decision for our family, to instill our values and the way that I want them to learn.
What, you referenced the need for positive change in one of your, your questions, the answers to one of the questions. What do you mean? Can you give some examples of the positive change you'd like to see?
Which number was that? Because I just want to make sure.
It was number one.
Oh, okay. Number one? Oh, that I would bring positive change? Oh, there needs to be positive change in the government school system?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Three minutes. I personally feel, I mean, the school system here in America has not changed in a really long time. And I feel like, I mean, this is bigger than the city schools, but I feel like on a national level that we need to look at the way our public schools are run and what our end goal is. I'm not going to go into a whole history of the public school education system. But I feel like the, the goal, we have, our, our city, sorry, our nation has changed so much, just even in a hundred years, you know, fifty years, even in ten years. And I don't feel like I've seen a lot of change in the school system to reflect the changes in our nation and what we want our students to learn, what kind of contributing members of community, of the community that we want them to be. I do feel like there's more, more of, like a less focus on teaching children how to learn versus teaching them what to learn so they can regurgitate it out on a test. That's my personal experience. I don't like the idea of teaching to a test. And so I would, I would like to see more of, kind of more individualized learning for, for every child. I mean, every child learns differently. And I feel like when I was doing my internship and working in the Arlington County Public Schools, I saw a shift as the children got older, where there was less hands-on learning. There were less field trips. There are less opportunities for different types of learners. And that was sad to me, you know, and then, and I'm like, oh, we, they don't go on that many field trips. I know that's related to funding and, you know, there are other things that, that go into that. But I feel like our school system is kind of geared just toward a certain type of learner, and we all don't learn the same. And as they get older, I mean, in, in high school, it's been a while for me, but, you know, there weren't as many field trips, there weren't as many experiments and a lot of that hand-on, hands-on stuff that you get at the lower level. And it's, it's not, it's not that, oh, that's like, you know, elementary-type thing. I mean, some of us here probably learn better by doing, or reading, or listening to something. And I just, it just feels like to me, based on my experience, that our education system is, is based on a certain type of learner, but we're not all that one certain type of learner. And I would, that's what I would like to see changed.
Would you emphasize critical thinking skills? Because when you mentioned that earlier, that did resonate with me.
Definitely.
People need to exercise their critical thinking skills.
They do, they do. And I love the idea of just giving children, and children to me, you're still in high school, you're still a child, okay? To give children something and just giving them time to figure it out. You know, we just did, I just taught a STEAM slash STEM class for our homeschool group. And just to see them, you know, working together and, you know, just a hands-off approach from me, the teacher, and just watching how they ran with, with these things. You know, and I had awards printed out for who was going to make the strongest bridge and, you know, and different things, thinking there was only going to be a couple of kids. They all did amazing, you know, and their, their bridge held up to the, the task that, you know. And I was, I need to print more awards for you guys, like I didn't set the bar, you know, I was like, I thought they were going to be down here. But, yeah, so I just definitely need to be able to learn for themselves because someone is not going to be there holding their hand once they graduate high school to teach them how to, you know, to learn on the job or to learn different life skills or, you know, whatever their job skills are. They need to be able to be independent thinkers.
Thank you.
Hi. How would you reach out to parents who are not currently engaged? What would your strategy be to reach out to the parents who have been MIA or you, you don't know?
That, that's a good question. I was surprised when I was in the public school system how little I actually saw, saw of parents, you know? And my whole philosophy is that teacher, this is when I was a teacher, that we are a team, you know? Yes, they spend a lot of time in school, but their parents are their parents. And we're a team, and you can't be a team if you're not able to communicate with that person. I think that one of the easiest ways would be, you know, kind of do a survey to see like what's the best way that they want to, for you to communicate with them. I'm kind of more straightforward, so I might be like, why aren't you, why aren't you involved? A nicer way to put that would be, you know, what can we do to get you more involved? That would be, you know, after I write it out and go, no, no, don't, don't send. Like, why is it, why are you not doing anything? You know, what can we do to get you more involved? And it might be having meetings at off-hours, you know, to allow teachers to, to FaceTime with a parent at nine o'clock at night because that's when they're not working, you know? It could be texting like, like someone mentioned. I mean, so many of us get so many emails a day, you know? I tell, I emailed you, like, I never saw it, you know, like type in my name and see if you can find it. But just what works best for each family, and I think that's going to put more on the teachers. I, I was, if that were me, I would love it. I would have a list of, you know, who I could text, who I could call, who I could do because that, that relationship would be so important to me to do what, you know, to find out what's going on with that child, so I can do what's best for that child in the classroom.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Moore?
Angela, thank you for replying.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'm going to ask you my question here. Why is it important to have a diverse teaching staff?
Well, I think that, I didn't know, so when I answered my question, I said I don't know what you meant by diverse in your question, so I didn't know if you meant male, female, or if you meant, you know, culturally diverse. Because teaching tends to be more of a female profession, so I wasn't sure which way you were going there. You want to clarify for me, or you just want me to answer generally?
Answer generally, answer how you, how you would take that, that question.
I think it's important because we all bring different things from our life to our jobs, you know? And we, you know, we bring different perspectives to things. I, I think it's good to, I mean, to me, it would be boring if everyone in the room were the same as me, you know? And that, that would just be so boring. I, I want to be around people who have different, you know, different life challenges, different life experiences, to be able to share that, you know, to, to share their point of view. I mean, it's just, and then our community here is very diverse. So if you have a bunch of the same kind of people, for lack of a better word, trying to reach a diverse community, they may or may not be able to relate to them very well. And education can only go so far. I mean, you can educate people, and this group of people this, or this group of people that. But to have someone there who knows the experiences, knows, you know, perhaps the discrimination, knows what they're going through, that they can better relate with them.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My question is about, I guess, the turnover rate that we see in our school districts. Besides the pay raises, what's your ideas of reducing those turnover rates? How can we keep those teachers and those good teachers in the school district?
Just keep the good, no. If the bad ones go, it's okay. No, we don't have any bad ones. This is something that I had to deal with when I was the administrator at the preschool level is, one thing, you don't want the teacher turnover happening all the time, you know? Because I think that does reflect, unfortunately, reflects negatively on the school system. That was one of the first things that people would ask me in the preschool, you know, how long have your teachers been here? So I know that that is important to parents. I mean, they were paying for their kids to go there, but we pay our taxes for our kids to go to public schools, right? So we're still all kind of paying for it. But we tried to do things, I mean, of course, you know, money is always good, right? But regardless, I don't know about you guys, regardless of how much you're getting paid, if you're not being treated well, I don't know. I'm not going to stay at the job. If, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's a whole nother. So I, I actually left some jobs because I didn't feel like I was being respected. So I think that's important for your staff to feel respected, for your staff to feel valued. And there are different ways, you know, that you can do that. I know just recently we had the teacher appreciation week. And, you know, it doesn't have to cost a lot of money, you know? Just even having, you know, at the preschool, we did like thank you breakfasts where the parents brought in, you know, some food and the, the teachers went to the little staff area and there were like little thank you signs. And so I don't know if it's just the teacher part in us, I just appreciate these little, you know, these little things. But just saying it, you know? I feel like in today's world, we don't just say, I appreciate you, you know? That was a great job. I like what you did. I don't know why people don't do that, but, you know, just, just saying a little note. We just did a, a thing at church the other night and they, all the leaders got like a little package with a handwritten thank you note, like they gave to the volunteers, I don't even know how many, twenty, fifty volunteers? They handwrote everyone's name on there. It didn't just say thank you, and they just handed one to everyone. It said, you know, thank you, Angela, and then it was signed by the leaders. Like, that just means so much. So I just, just the, the little things. I used to do something in our newsletter, I used to do a teacher spotlight, you know? I think people see teachers like up on these pedestals, like, you know, they're almost like, you know, they're above me, they're better than me. I know the kids do, and they would see me in the grocery store, like, you go to the store? You know, you're buying eggs? To just, you know, see them as part of our community, you know? And ask them what their favorite color is or what their favorite movie is, you know, just to get more of a relational, you know, type of, you know, relationship with this, you know, the staff members. And, you know, not just the teachers, but, you know, your lunch staff and your cleaning staff. I, I just feel, you know, we really need to appreciate all levels of people who make, you know, everyday work, you know, in the school.
So just like we do, you'll, if, when you're on the board, you'll have people, special interest groups, parents, whomever, people who have a soul mission that'll come up to you and bend your ear. So how will you, not as a parent and not as the administrator of the co-op, but as a board member, how will you handle the, that special interest group, that individual with that singular mission?
First and foremost, I would thank them for coming to me. I think it's important to go, you know, face-to-face to someone and, you know, and not talk behind their back or, you know, whisper in the shadows. So I'd thank them for coming to me. I would just sit and listen to their concerns. Again, not letting on one way or the other if I was for or against, you know, what they were promoting, but just listen to them, ask any questions, clarifying questions that I might have, just trying to seek to understand why they want what they want. And then I would say, you know, thank you, and, you know, I'd take some notes and then I would have to take it to the board. I would be careful to never try to, you know, lead on that decision. I would be careful to never try to, you know, lead on that a decision was going to be made one way or the other, or that I had any, you know, final say in any type of decision. It might seem like an easy way to get off, you know, like, oh, I got to take this to the board, you know, kind of thing. But the board is a team, and so I don't want to be out there acting on my own, or people thinking that they can come to me to kind of, you know, have their way. Well, can you speak good about me, you know, on this? That's not determining, that's not how I roll. So I would just get their information, and, you know, and be a good listener, but ask, I mean, I might ask them devil's advocate kind of questions, just because that's, you know, just to kind of, so I would be more prepared in taking something, you know, to the board. But I would kind of be even.
Be like Switzerland.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm just like, I'm just here to listen to you and take your things to the board.
Thank you.
So I've noticed year after year that certain student groups do poorly in our SOL scores. And that's that black students, Hispanic, and economically disadvantaged students. What ideas do you have to improve that student achievement gap for those student groups?
Okay. So one thing that I would want to know, and I think I mentioned that there might be research out there, is like, why are these achievement gaps there? You know, is it a language issue? Is it, they don't have support at home? You know, why does this gap exist? Thank you. Someone said, it was on the tip of my tongue. So why does it exist? And I know it's not the school system to go in and, you know, solve everybody's life problems, but again, I might, my whole thing, you know, is just seeking to understand first. And then maybe there is something that the school system can do to be supportive of families. You know, maybe they have two parents who are working two jobs each, so they're not getting help, you know, with homework, or they're not getting sent to bed at a decent time. I mean, again, I, you know, we can't control what goes on in the homes, but if there's a way that we could be supportive of families, I really feel like there needs to be a good team between the families and the school system to, you know, to find out what we could do to be, to be helpful, to be available to them on off-hours and things like that. I, we homeschool year-round, so, you know, people are like, oh, do you take a break? I'm like, what do you mean a break? How do you take a break from learning? You're always, you know, you're always learning. I think one idea, which I know the city has looked at in the past, is year-round homeschooling, or, sorry. Homeschooling is just always on the brain. Year-round schooling. I, I've tried to read about how some of the other school systems have done that, but just to have smaller breaks, you know. And then as a parent, I think, how would that affect parents? You know, if parents are working, and then you just have some random two weeks off in the middle of, you know, whatever. It would definitely be like a cultural change for, you know, for our city to have, you know, where you don't have the summers off and, you know, and stuff. But I feel like that may be one way to help, where they're kind of in-school more and getting more support. Again, I don't feel it's 100% the school system's responsibility, but that we can be there to support families through that. And then, you know, the economically challenge, you know, is it a resource issue? Is there something that the community could do to step up and, you know, and help them, you know, with that, so.
Thank you.
What plans do you have to have the school staff and the parents work together as a team? Do you, like, any ideas of how that would be something that you could make it happen during your term?
Well, I couldn't make it happen by myself. I'll put that out there. I, I think it's just going to need a different mindset, you know. I feel, for my experience, it seems like a lot of the parents are, here are my kids at school. You know, you do the thing that you do with them, and then send them back to me. And I think communication is the biggest thing in establishing relationships from, you know, the first day of school, you know. And I think it's definitely easier to do that with the elementary kids. You know, what high schooler wants, like mom walking in with them, and like, you know, going in and meeting the teacher and stuff. But I think it should be across the board for all age levels. Finding out which is, what is the best way to communicate with them. So the only way I know how to do that, since you can't talk to everybody, is some type of survey, you know. You could do Survey Monkey, like something online, where, you know, people can just fill it out. But to try to get as much communication from them as possible, as to, you know, what, you know, asking them, what do you want from me this school year? You know, what can I do to help you in being, feeling more connected to your child's classroom? I don't know what the rules are in Manassas Park, but, you know, for parents coming in, you know, if a parent wants to just come in and observe, that was something I didn't mind, you know. I welcome people to come in and see what was going on in the classroom, especially with the younger ages, because they may not be able to go home and communicate, you know, what their school day looks like. And then depending on what the parents say that they would want from me, then I would try to, I mean, ask me as a teacher, but what they want from their teachers to kind of help facilitate that, if I could, you know, depending on what it is. But just communication and establishing that relationship from the beginning, I think, is so important. And as some of the other candidates mentioned, you know, where, so you're not just reaching out when someone fails a test, or someone, there's disciplinary actions, but there's, you know, reaching out for positive things, or just reaching out, hey, you know, I heard your mom just had a baby, you know, and reaching out and just really having that personal relationship with, with the parent. I know when they get into older grades, they're dealing with a lot more parents, you know. They don't just have their one, you know, core class of kids. But just, it kind of goes back to knowing what's going on in the child's life. You know, I heard your dad broke his leg, and he's been home for a couple, he's going to be home for a couple of weeks. You know, how's that going? How do you feel about that? And is there anything I can do for the family? And I, I see each classroom as kind of its own little community within a bigger community. So maybe the whole class can make cards, you know, get well card for the dad, or something like that. Again, it's, things don't have to cost money for us to show, you know, that we care.
What, in your opinion, is the best way to resolve differences between school board members and between the school board and the school administration, should that ever happen?
Okay, great question. So when I worked at the preschool, we were a co-op preschool. And so there was me, and then we had an elected board. And so I basically spoke on kind of the behalf of the teachers and all the legalities that go with and rules that we had to follow. And the parents on the board spoke as, you know, parents, as customers, basically. And so there was a lot of times where there were, you know, banging of heads, where they wanted something a certain way, and they didn't understand the rules and regulations. So I would have to say like, no, that can't happen, even if we want it, you know, and this is the reason why. So I think just open, open, honest communication is important. Being respectful and listening to all the sides, even if they might seem ridiculous. Go back to the old teacher thing of there are no bad questions, you know. Listen to their questions, what they have to say. Sometimes you need to tell grown-ups that you're not going to get your way, you know, in a respectful way. You know, there's only one outcome we can have here, ladies and gentlemen, so let's talk it through and see, you know, what we can, what we can get to. But hopefully people will be, you know, respectful of one another and listen to, you know, to new ideas. Sometimes parents would bring up ideas that I hadn't thought about, because at that time I was not a parent when I was at the preschool. And so it's like, oh, okay, you know, I wouldn't have thought about that, because I'm not, you know, I'm not there. And so, you know, it's not to say that all ideas are, you know, ridiculous, or, you know, or whatever, but we just, we need to talk it out and just know, not everybody's going to get their way, and, and that's okay. And we need to be okay with that. We can't, then afterwards, I can't believe that, you know. And then that is something that I'm very much against. I mean, anything needs to happen in the open. You're not going to leave here and go talk behind closed doors, or try to start rumors and things like that. And I, again, grown-ups need to be reminded of this sometimes. And, you know, then you have people coming up to you with their special interests and things that they want to do, and it can, it can easily get out of control, I feel like. I was a liaison between, also the liaison between the teachers and the parents. This is where the parents would want something, and the teachers were like, that's not going to work, you know, when we implement it. So I had to deal with a lot of people, you know, coming at me with, you know, with the best ideas, of course. They all had the best ideas. You know, and I am okay telling people no, if that is my role. I mean, obviously, on the school board, we will be working as a team. But, you know, as a preschool director, I mean, sometimes I just had to tell people, no, this is, this is not going to happen. And I need to be okay with letting people down. Because I think that's hard for people too, you know, letting people down, because you want to make everybody happy. But you need to look at what the big picture is, you know. Is this the best for the school board? Is that the best for the school? And not just what makes this person happy, or this person, or me happy. It might not be what I want, you know, and I have to be okay with that, too.
Thank you.
What are your feelings about transgender students on gender segregated sports teams?
Wow, no one else got that question?
I needed to make it different for all three.
I, I know, but my goodness. All right, say that question one more time.
Transgender students on what are typically gender segregated sports teams.
Okay. To answer this question, I would have to go to my belief system. I'm a Christian who believes in God. I believe that there are men and that there are women. I personally would be against having a girl who thinks, who is identifying as a boy to participate in boy sports and vice versa. I mean, that's, that's kind of short of it. Thank you.
My question on dual immersion. What are your thoughts about dual immersion, particularly in elementary schools?
All right, I was hoping I would get that question, Sam. I actually substituted in a school that was dual immersion, Spanish/English, and I thought it was like the coolest thing. You know, I was like, wow, they didn't have this when I was in school. And children would, so, I mean, it goes both ways. So you have the, say, a Spanish-speaking child who only speaks Spanish at home, and then you have the child who only speaks English at home. So I feel like both groups of people can, can benefit from that. They told me I didn't have to speak Spanish when I was subbing in the classroom. And I'm, don't ask me to speak Spanish right now. I get, I get embarrassed, because I'm like, I know a lot, and I can understand a lot, but I'm always afraid I'm going to say it wrong, because it's been a while since I got to put it into practice. But they're like, oh, you don't have to speak Spanish when you're in there. I was like, what fun is that? But, I mean, it was a math class. But, you know, the studies show that the younger a child is, and start learning a new language, that the easier it is for them. And my question would be, if we're doing that in, you know, in the elementary school level, what happens when they, I guess, when they go to middle school, they can just take like Spanish or something, right? But it's different. Like, it would, so many things we want to do just at elementary school. I think it would be kind of cool to extend that to the, the older grades. But I think definitely the whole community can benefit, you know, from that. I mean, I know people applying for jobs, you know, if they're bilingual, that's seen as, seen as a plus. And they're just not for, you know, their own personal self, but to be able to communicate with people in the community that they may not otherwise be able to communicate with. You know, you have different generations of people living in a house, so the younger ones may know English, but the older ones don't. And how awesome would it be, you know, that, oh, is this your abuela, you know? And, and kind of, you know, just to communicate with them. And, you know, I think it's a way of showing respect to people, too, and trying to communicate in a way that they can better understand you. And, I mean, like, I'm all, I'm all for it. I would just like to see it continue past the elementary level.
Thank you.
All right. My question is going to be about, I guess, what the process and criteria would be for looking at learning material being either banned or being implemented? There's, you know, throughout the nation, we hear talks about a lot of things being pulled from the curriculum, even library books. So what's, what's the type of process and steps you would implement to either make that decision or not to make that decision?
Okay. I feel like there are two separate issues of like a book being banned from a library and trying to decide curriculum. So I feel like they're two different things. One, I would defer to, what have you guys done in the past? That's the easy, that's the easy answer. I would, I mean, honestly, though, I would like to see what the school has done in the past and what their criteria are in making a decision. You know, and then if I had something to add, well, have you ever thought about this? Or why do we have this on here? You know, just, again, seeking to understand why that criteria was chosen in the first place. We're choosing things to benefit our, our children, you know, as a whole. I, I think the teachers need to also be able to utilize their resources, though. So just because something might look good for the student, is this going to be good for the teachers to use to implement what we want the children to learn? So that would, those would be a couple of things that I would look at as far as, you know, as far as that. I don't want to get controversial and say, you know, there are certain things that I don't believe belong in curriculum to go into schools. I don't believe that our curriculum should have a political agenda. We are there to, you know, teach the basics, you know, so to say. So that's, that would be another criteria, that there's no, and this could be a little difficult, but depending, that there's no bias. I mean, when you have people from all over the world, you know, going to your schools, you have to be careful, you know, you don't want, I don't like using the word offended, because I feel like that's overused nowadays. But, you know, you don't want something in there that's going to offend someone. I remember something I read a long time ago. It was some kind of standardized test. And I don't know why, but Mickey Mouse was one of their, one of the questions. And the child had never heard of Mickey Mouse. And it's because it's, that's kind of cultural, right? And, and so it's like, well, the child, they couldn't answer that, you know, they didn't understand the question because they didn't know who Mickey Mouse was, you know. So I, you know, homeschooling goes through with a fine-tooth comb. When I'm looking at curriculum that I want for my family, you know, does this go along with what my values are and what I want from my family to learn? So I would, you know, assume that we would do the same, you know, for the public schools. Is this, is this going to help us reach our end goal? And if it's not, then, you know, away with it. As far as banning, you know, it depends on what the topic is. I know that parents are, you know, and, and teachers, I mean, people are, they have their opinions of, you know, what belongs in a school library, for example, and what doesn't. And I feel like we should listen to their concerns and, you know, and then kind of weigh, you know, the pros and cons and decide if this is something that, you know, that we should indeed have or, or not have. I mean, you also look at if you're ordering new things, you know, for the school, too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We invite you to make a three-minute closing statement, whatever you'd like to say.
Okay, well, I just thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I just really felt, my husband and I have been talking about this for, for some time. He joked, he's like, oh, you should go on the school board. And I was like, you know, oh, I don't know, I don't even know how that process works. And then I saw that there were openings. I was just like, okay, this is like perfect timing. And I just feel that, you know, I definitely would have some stuff to learn, kind of being out of the public school system for a while, but I'm up for, you know, learning new things. But I feel like from being a parent, educator, and administrator, that I would bring something of value to the board.
Thank you. The public hearing will be June 7th. And feel free to have your supporters come and speak live, or to send in emails, whatever you prefer, and as many as you prefer.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you stepping up and wanting to volunteer. Much appreciated.
All right, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Well, we've had three wonderful candidates. This is not going to be an easy decision. Is there anything else for the good of the city before we adjourn? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you.